Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for January 17th, 2017. First order of business will be our organizational meeting to elect officials for the Planning Call the meeting to order at 7:00. So, first order of business is to elect a chairman for the year. Would anyone like to make any nominations? Chairman, Commissioner Vexey?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Crystal Havy. He's been on an excellent job this last year, and we've accomplished quite a bit.
Any discussion?
Just for a second.
As for a second?
Second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations, Chairman Havy.
Thank you. And thank you to all members for your vote. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve as your chairman again. Next order of business will be the election of a secretary. And if you don't mind, I'd like to place a nomination in the name of Commissioner Joe Vexey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Petuski. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Okay, that concludes the organizational items. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was November 15th, They were provided to you. Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Commissioner Vexey. Is there a second? By Mr. Vigliati. Any discussion, corrections, changes?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, we have a zoning referral, a zone change for 577 Holly Lane, RS3 to CF District. Mr. Bansky.
Okay, so we received an application for a zone change from an RS3 residential district to a CF district at 577 Holly Lane, petitioned by Par One Development LLC. Hopefully, everyone received my staff comments regarding the goals and policies for the town plan of conservation and development, as well as how the proposed change aligns with the town plan of conservation and development. You know, I won't reread all my staff comments, but I think that there's some consistencies and inconsistencies with this potential zone change. The future land use map in the POCD does identify this parcel as a medium-density residential land use. Food for thought directly next door, it is a CF district, that's where the Big Y development is. So, you know, POCDs are, it's not that just because a land use says one thing doesn't mean that that's necessarily the appropriate use. We don't, never know exactly how a, how the land use for a town might evolve and change for the better. So I think that, you know, this one could go, can go both ways. You know, I think that it's reasonable to potentially approve this zone change, given the fact that it wouldn't be spot zoning. There is a commercial district right next door. This would basically just extend that boundary line for that CF zone. It wouldn't change any of the application process, other than the land uses that are permitted as of right. Currently, it's residential land uses are permitted as of right, and if they wanted to do anything else, they would either require a text amendment or a zone change. They decided to follow, go for the zone change. And, you know, some of the potential threats are the commercial districts potentially encroaching further into the residential neighborhoods that are further up along Holly Lane as you drive north. There's also some wetlands on the parcel, and, you know, part of the POCD is to make sure that we protect, enhance these environmentally sensitive areas. It's not to say that a change of zone and a change from a residential use to a commercial building, they still, they would not be able to preserve or protect those wetlands. So, those are pretty much my comments.
Okay, just, one thing I forgot to do was, just for the record, Mr. Watson is sitting in for Commissioner Sempt, who's out of the country today. Questions for Mr. Bansky on the application? Mr. Watson, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, I do have a couple, because I actually went and spent some time looking at Google Maps and all of that. That piece of parcel, that piece of land is constantly flooding. I mean, it takes a slight rain for that land to, for the current residential house to be, all of the, all of the yards to be underwater, and it stays underwater a good deal of the time. So, I think that, no matter who owns it, there should be a very close look in terms of its wetland, its wetland designation. Because if you look at, from overhead Google Maps, you see that there's actually a lake, a, it's not truly a, it's almost a pond, but it's a rather large pond that runs straight almost up to the bend.
Grab the hands out.
And it also looks like that pond is being fed by both the Marriott across the street and by the development, which I don't think that's going to get less, it's only going to get worse. So, it would seem to me that if anyone were to try to build on that four acres, they're going to have to essentially elevate whatever they build in there to a massive degree, which means that, at some point, they're going to be faced with a wetlands, a wetlands approval. That would seem to me that before we change this, we had to send it and get a real wetlands designation on there. Maybe you can't do that with a residential lot, but I don't think that, in that area, that you should give up the chance of that filtration of a wetlands there, because Marriott's not going away, Merritt's not going away, and the existing shopping center's not going away, and all three of those are feeding all of the runoff in that area that's going there. I looked, and I, you mentioned that the housing behind it would be, might be impacted. I don't think that that would be the big problem there, because it looks like there, that by the time you get to the other side of that lake, you have, you still have 100 feet of tree land, and it would look like it would be fairly close from there. But I think wetland is a really big issue, particularly given that that area up there, a lot of those people are still on wells. So, we need that filtration if people are going to be drinking that water up there. If a lot of it is now coming as runoff from the paved areas, it would seem to me that we need more wetlands, not less wetlands in that area. That's my contribution to what I see there.
Am I responding?
Well, I mean, I completely agree with you. I'm not really responding, but I totally agree with yours, your position that, you know, we, the wetlands should not be encroached upon any further. You know, what impact a commercial development will have as opposed to a residential development there, it's difficult to say. I think that it would have to be, I mean, you couldn't really attach a condition to the zone change that whatever use there is, does not encroach on the wetlands, but that's certainly something that, you know, if the commission felt that they either wanted to approve or deny, if they wanted to approve, they would, you could keep in the back of your mind that when this comes back through for the zoning commission, you know, we could list on a concern letter that, should any development happen there, there would be, there is to be no encroachment on the wetlands, and in fact, you know, they could do a wetlands restoration project there to improve it.
Can I ask a question of you, and this, and this is something I don't really know about, I remember reading up on this a long time ago, but there is a difference between pure woodland, wetlands, and water bodies. And it seems to me that, over the years, I would bet you since that house was built, that that, that wetland back there has become more and more of a formal lake or pond in that area. If it's a full year, 12-month ponded area, the designation for wetlands changes greatly in terms of the area that you need to save around it and everything else. That's, that's why I'm saying is maybe the, our wetlands people should look into it and see what is the qualification, because then you could determine. You know, you might be able to put business offices right up next to the road.
Ms. Petuski?
Question. Any development that went there, would it have to get inland wetlands approval, whether we changed it or not?
Yes. If they, if the, let's, if the Planning Commission and Zoning Commission, or let's say the Zoning Commission denied the zone change application, and it stayed a residential use, if they went for, the property owner went for a 500-square-foot addition that impacted any way into the wetlands, that would require a wetlands hearing. So, it would, it would require a wetlands application regardless of what happens there.
Any change?
Any change.
Any change.
Yeah, I, looking at the map, the wetland goes right up within three feet of the house. So...
Just a question, do we know, is that house occupied?
No, I don't know. I checked the realtors on it, and the woman who owns it is probably in her 90s.
Because every...
It's been on the market for the last year, and it's been, the price reductions keep going down on it. So there is someone trying to get rid of it.
Because I've never seen anybody over in that house as many years as I've been there. My concern about expanding the, the commercial footprint there is pretty much limited to the traffic pattern, you know, aside from the issues already identified. Should any further commercial development go, unless it's an, it's an extension of the existing Big Y Plaza, that road narrows once you get beyond the traffic light at the Big Y Plaza, and then it goes down to just two lanes beyond that. And it's also becoming an issue at where Holly Lane and Huntington Road come together, that traffic four-way intersection is becoming increasingly treacherous, especially, it seems to be in December, ironically, right around Christmas time. So, I'm just listing this as concerns, should they decide to further expand the commercial footprint beyond the Big Y Plaza and go into that, even though it's not all that big of a parcel we're talking about here, and it's quite narrow, actually. But any further expansion of it, I think the traffic pattern and the configuration of that road at that point would need to be evaluated. I know they added extra lanes, and we did the Big Y Plaza way back years and years ago. So, those are just the things I just want to identify as something, an item of concern, should that go forward. Any other questions or concerns on the project? This is a referral back to zoning, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. You have a motion to refer it back to the zoning commission with a favorable recommendation? Or no recommendation?
If I know how to state something, I would say something. I don't know how to state it for zoning. Well, I can't be the one to do it.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the zone change with a favorable recommendation to the zoning commission for 577 Holly Lane, to be changed from an RS3 to a CF district.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to the zoning commission. Is there a second?
Do you really mean that?
Second by Mr. Vexey.
Thank you.
If we have further discussion, I think we can include in our referral the items identified by Mr. Watson and myself, traffic and the wetlands situation. Is there any other items that we want in our referral to identify to the zoning commission?
This is not, I don't know if this is germane, but this is an example of where we should be saying, put that, put those business, professional business offices in the Todd.
Put, I'm sorry, say again?
Put them in the Todd, if we have so much of a need for more professional business offices. That should be the ground floor of some of our new buildings that are, that are being built, that we say we have no business purpose for right now. We should be driving that business to those, those spaces, instead of taking up more of our wetlands. We should actively be pushing them to say, go look at all of our other properties in town that, where we're talking about putting up three-story apartment buildings, and we say we have no retail to fill the bottom floors. We could put a business office in there for five years until a restaurant's ready to come in. I mean, that would be a really good way, I think, for us to try to hit both of these. And a lot of people, I think, would be very happy with that, in terms of, but it would allow us to actually do what we say we want to do with, with our denser retail areas.
Sir.
So, your comment, Commissioner Watson, so that's, would, you would want that to be listed as a part of the favorable recommendation, and this is a potential concern for that, or something completely separate?
I would love to send that to zoning.
As an unfavorable recommendation to approve this?
Well, I, I, see, I don't know if planning, if that's out of the range of, out of the range, scope of planning, but it seems to me that's a real planning kind of idea, in terms of a macro sense of what Stratford wants to do, saying this is not following our conservation and development program of the future. We're talking about creating more dense zones in areas, not continually spreading out onto every single piece, that we should take what buildable projects we know are coming and put them where we want them to be. We're not saying don't build, we're saying build over here.
If I may, my only concern with the area would be to try to make sure that there is some buffer area between the houses that are, I know they're up top.
The Holly Glen condo, or, I think that's Holly Glen, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the name of it is, but I know they look down at this, this property, and it, right now, there, there's tree line there, so it would be nice to keep or preserve some of the trees that are on the property.
I agree with that.
So prefer, preserve the tree line as a buffer between development between, from the wetlands, and is also from residential uses to the north, or...
It's the nearest, actually, it's not Holly Glen, I'm sorry, it's...
It's two, it's Holly Glen and there's a, there's a...
The smaller one, that is actually the next residential, see, actually, it's the, aside from that one house, is the only residential, you know, in that area, but that's actually, there actually is a sizable buffer of trees between the existing house and the first line of the condominiums. So I think we actually, we do want to indicate that we, preservation of that to the greatest extent possible.
Jake, could a survey be done also about how much inflow is going in there at, as stormwater? How many culverts are there running into that space? Because I think that would be something to really think about, how much additional water we... There is a formula for how much water you have versus how much the ground can absorb and all those kinds of things, that we should look into that, because...
So how much water currently runs into the wetlands?
Yeah, because Marriott's right across the street. I assume all their water's coming straight down and going into that area. But looking at the maps, it looks like also that the develop, the shopping center has two or three drains going into there also.
I will follow up with Conservation Department, hopefully they'd have those, those details for us.
Any further comments, questions on the approval? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Moving on. Any CAM site reviews?
No.
Any 8-24s?
No.
I will bring up, though, on item 824, just as an informational item, the town council, the Planning Commission referred an 824 review back to the town council on the contract plating property. And there's been some confusion over there. I'm not sure if I had alerted the chief of staff, the mayor's chief of staff, because it was on the agenda in November, and it was tabled, I think it was November, yeah, November, it was tabled in November, and then it didn't reappear as a tabled item on the council's December agenda, nor has it shown up again in the January agenda. So, I'm afraid that's getting lost somehow.
Lost in the sauce.
Yeah, so, I know we had, we had some very specific items that we had, we had issues on, and I know one councilman had questions, and that's why he has to have it tabled, but I just don't want to see that get lost in the shuffle someplace, so... If you can just follow up with...
I'll follow up with the council clerk.
Council clerk, maybe we can find out what happened to that and make sure it gets back on their February agenda. Item six, discussion of the town plan of conservation and development. To bring all the members up to speed, at our last meeting, we had discussed possibly putting together a resolution, among other things, to discuss funding as we, the town goes into their budget cycle, to be able to accomplish some of the tasks that we are charged with in the implementation plan of the plan of conservation and development. I met with Commissioner Petuski and the chairman of the zoning commission, Commissioner Stephanie Phillips, and we went over, you know, what we're faced with, and I took, made an attempt at putting together some texts, and we gave it over to Jay. I know this is coming up quick, because with some other issues I got going on right now, yesterday was the first time I had a chance to sit down and actually put some words to it. So I just wanted to actually start it, the, make sure that members had this and can take a look at this, and, you know, open it up for questions. We don't have to act on it tonight if members don't want to, we can let it go, but I want to make sure that at some point we do get this through the process, so that our intentions are known to the mayor's office and the town council members that are going to be formulating their budget, that we are seeking some funding to be able to do what we need to do for, as we're charged with in the plan of conservation and development between 2014 and 2024, when this document actually expires. So, members have that on their desk. If you want to take a minute to look it over, we can do that. If anyone has any comments or questions on that, this would be a good time to start that conversation. I don't know, Jay, do you want to add anything to the discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Chairman Havy really hit on three very large undertakings that were outlined in the POCD. One to update the zoning code. The other was to, is more of a subset of that, which I know was a, was something that Commissioner Petuski was focusing on, which is some neighborhood-based design standards that really reflect the uniqueness of each one of these different neighborhoods. You know, you, you wouldn't want the same design standards for the historic district that you would have for, let's say, someone give me a neighborhood that's Lordship.
Lordship, okay.
You know, two distinctly different characters in terms of neighborhood feel, so... And then the last was to, for the design guidelines for Barnum Avenue, making it more walkable, bikeable, human-scaled, and more aesthetically pleasing. So, if we're, if the Planning Commission is able to kind of kickstart these three, really it's the zoning code, and then it'll kind of trickle down to some of these other things, I mean, that would be a huge success and a huge check off the, off the list for the POCD.
Who do we propose sending this statement to?
The plan would be for both of the land use, our land use boards, Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission, to both adopt it as an official statement of the elected membership, and then refer that to the mayor and the town council, since they're the ones that are going to be the budget-making bodies.
I personally believe it's well on the right path. These objectives should be set in motion, ensure that they get done before they get lost in the pile. Do we need a motion?
If we all want to go forward with it, we can do that, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. By Mr. Vexey?
Yes.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Petuski? Motion's been made in second. Are there any further questions or comments, changes, comments?
I'll make a comment after we've accepted it, essentially. I just, your point...
Now's your chance, now's your chance.
Your point three, your point three about limiting it to Barnum gives me pause.
It is, that is a reference...
If you could simply state that, starting with Barnum, or focusing first on Barnum, as the model for, for the approach for every other individual area, would, to me, would make it make better sense, because otherwise we have created a limit of ourself from the get-go.
The references to an item on page 26, it actually specifically outlines, it says, "Develop design guidelines for Barnum Avenue that allow for redevelopment to occur in an urban, walkable form." So it was specifically highlighted in the plan, and that's the reason why, it's, they're not meant to exclude anything else. And I think it's also important to do that in light of the, what we just went through with the proposed Starbucks, that over at the former, I can't remember the name of the insurance company that's over in, Merrill Insurance, the former Vanstone property. That's an area where actually parts of it are involved in the Civic Center district, which actually prohibits restaurants and stuff like that, and you have one of, what was identified as one of the most horrendous, most dangerous intersections in the town, where King Street, Barnum, Nichols come together.
I understand, I understand the rationale, I just...
Yeah. So, I mean, we can expand this, but I think that was specifically in the plan, and that's why I latched on, is that's an area that I think it might be a good starting point for it to, to start tackling.
It's half-done, so it makes perfect sense to finish what you started.
And the streetscape's been proceeding, you know...
Oh, can I ask for a friendly amendment, just to simply add in there to start with, or something of that sort? I don't care what the phrasing is, but...
A potential suggestion could be, develop the design guidelines for Barnum Avenue, Main Street, and other major corridors?
That I would love.
That's fine.
That's going further than what, I just, because we never know what, where we're going to get a major funded project going first.
If you have it in a resolution that's been approved by the town council.
It's happened before, that suddenly we could get, we could get a grant for this area, and then we go over there and forget about this altogether.
Okay, we can make that.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering, like, the position of town planner, is there any redundancy to that position, based on, like, people who work for the town already? Is that a position that we, I mean, if we recommend that, I'm just curious, what objective would that meet?
Well, prior to around 2012, there actually were two full-time employees. One was the Planning and Zoning Administrator, which is Gary Lawrence and had before, Jay's actually occupying for it. Then there was somebody that actually, his full-time job was the town planner, a gentleman by the name of Dave Colleen, and you'll see in some towns in there, and that's their full-time job. It was never, the position, the vacancy was never filled, I'm not exactly sure why. But it, in most towns, you'll probably find that they are two different, different entities. The P&amp;Z Administrator looks, oversees the zoning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they work together as a team, obviously, but they're, they're separate offices. Maybe, Jay, you can elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. It's just, there just aren't enough hours in the day for myself to organize all the meetings, be on all the subcommittees, manage the day-to-day staff, and be an effective town planner. I have a planning background, I consider myself the town planner, as well as the zoning administrator. But a town planner can, for example, when I was a town planner for the city of Richport, you know, I was able to secure a $25 million grant in my first year. You know, a $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 salary, or whatever, 50, you know, whatever it happens to be, has the potential to bring in good... has the potential to bring in good money to help fund projects like a Barnum Avenue streetscape. You know, as much as I do this stuff on the side and at night when I'm not being paid and on the weekends, I just can't, I can't do it as effectively as someone who, really, that's what they're doing. They're, you know, when the planning commission, perfect, here's a perfect example. Harold's question on the wetlands, you know, how mu, how many gallons does it take per storm? I physically don't have the capability to do any of that research other than shoot an email and hope that I get a response. So, and, and I can tell you that the zoning commission in particular has been very interested in trying to secure additional, a planner for the town. Just merely on all of our objectives that we're trying to do. We're trying to rewrite the sign regulations for the town of Stratford. We are trying to, you know, they've been trying to set up a subcommittee for the medical marijuana regulations for the town of Stratford, because our moratorium is coming up, which we'll be talking about later tonight. You know, I physically don't really have time to write draft regulations for the town of Stratford with everything else that I'm doing. I did volunteer to do it, to do it, and I actually wrote a vast majority of them this weekend, so. That's, that's a part of the reason why, that, why they're looking for a full-time town planner. You know, when the last planner left, and this is just what I've heard, that they, he was said, you know, Stratford doesn't need a town planner. They should just use the services of the metropolitan council of governments, really serves the purpose of transportation planning as mandated by the federal government. They are, they are not planners or advocates for the town. They do that. They do advocate for the town. They help us chase down state and federal dollars for transportation planning grants. But we're missing out on, on a lot more. So, I mean, that's my sales pitch.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My personal experience when we had a town planner named Colleen was a factor that we put in the Greenway. And it was a lot of his help in the planning and getting things out there, including getting the funding onto that. On top of that, they worked with a number of other things, including the Perry House, things of that sort. And it is necessary, really, to get a town planner who looks at the small parts that don't really come out too often. And it's a very good identity. You know, we've, they've been playing with this dog park for 10, 20 years, okay? With a planner involved, it would go much, for much faster to get it out there. And plus the factor of establishing funding.
Absolutely.
I think one thing that I did forget is that, you know, we pay for a lot of consultants here in town of Stratford. So that money's going to someone anyways. I think it's always nice to have somebody who's invested in the town of Stratford and not necess, necessarily here for two months, staying in a hotel, and then off to Memphis or some other town in the Northeast. So I think some, we can do a lot of this work in-house, which is, which is nice. We really get to put some of that, our local, local fingerprint on these plans that really try to tap into what the residents want, as opposed to something that's regurgitated from some other town in the Midwest that kind of fits Stratford.
I just did research on one of our consultants who came in to help us do something, to discover that he makes $450,000 a year. So we are paying.
Is he hiring?
What? Is he hiring? Nobody considers himself a not-for-profit.
I think half his salary will be found.
He considers himself a not-for-profit. So, Jay, I honestly believe that towns that, that can afford it, they are actually paying into their future. A planner is someone who is 10 steps ahead of where we are today and getting things ready for us so that when we get to that point, everything is prepared. They also, a good planner also deals with the social capital of a town, not just with the economic capital, but also with the social capital. And it's a very hard thing to keep that, those two constructs balanced. So I think if we really look at what Stratford needs, where our, where the chaff is right now, it's partly that, that right now, when we have MetroCog telling us this is what's going to happen, this is the vision for Stratford, people are saying, no, that's not my vision. So there is a conflict there that a planner could actually help smooth over. I'm not saying throw MetroCog out the door, because I think they are, they're a very valid organization. But I think we are asking them to try to do more than what they are good at doing. And ultimately, our anger with them is not their fault. It's because we don't have a planner here who's responsible not just for the roads, not just for the traffic flow, but also is responsible for how we, why we love our town. And I think that's where we can actually, you can pin a planner down to say, these are the kinds of things that we want you to work on.
Could I ask for a five-minute recess?
Sure. Chair, the commissioner will stand in recess for five minutes, until eight o'clock.
Put that one forward.
Okay.
This one forward, from the meeting that we had.
Okay. Call us back. Just state your, what you're going to do, and yeah, there's no problem with that. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, we only needed a minute in there. Commissioner Petuski.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw the, the second because I have a conflict of interest in, or in, around the town planner position.
Okay, I will actually take that second, put my, put myself in as the seconding member now. So everything stays as is. And if anybody has any more comments or questions, otherwise we can proceed to a vote to refer to the zoning commission, for their, adopt it and refer to the zoning commission at the same time. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, carries, one, two, three, four, in favor, one abstention. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Do you have anything on 5.3 of the zoning, that's that infamous apartments?
When we get the $200,000 to update the zoning regulations, we can take that off.
We'll take care of that one, right, okay. Okay, item eight, Status of Research on Medical Marijuana Regulations in Methadone Clinics. Members should have a referral from the zoning commission, which we can discuss at this time. Boy, time flies.
So the zoning commission had asked me to draft a revised regulation extending the moratorium for the, on medical marijuana dispensaries and producers, as well as methadone clinics, expiring, which will expire February 5th, 2017. The only change to the language is that we will change the date to February 8th, I'm sorry, February 5th, 2018. And as you will see on page two of the text amendment, where it says, "Proposed text," at the very la, second to last line, expiration of this final in all capital letters, they were emphatic that final be in there. So this is the final moratorium that they plan on extending regarding medical marijuana and methadone clinics. Just as a side note, I told you what I did my, on the weekend, working on the medical marijuana regulations to be discussed over these next few months by the zoning commission. Either way, that would get referred to you all, so you would have your eyes on that one way or another. But it's something that, it's not just being extended, I, it's from, from what I can gauge, it doesn't sound like it's just being extended for another year and then a rush and the end of the year to kind of see, to extend it again. It sounds like there seems to be some motivation to act on it.
Is it the intention to call up that subcommittee that we had formed? Or is this something that's going to be handled exclusively by the zoning commission?
Sounds like it's going to be handled exclusively by the zoning commission.
What are we doing, passing this forward?
This would be to refer it back, they referred the extension to us. We would be referring it back to them with our comments, if any.
Just the moratorium for another year.
Just the moratorium.
Just a clarification. So the subcommittee, the discussion around having a subcommittee, appointing two members of this board, a couple of members from the zoning, that is not moving forward?
I would recommend that you, that you listen to the tape from the January 10th administrative meeting. And it, my take from that was that the efforts on that have fizzled. And that the additional legs, there's, you know, finding a secretary, finding rooms, organizing space. There was some frustration from the zoning commission. They basically said, enough with the, the, the subcommittee, we're going to take the lead on this. We know the, some of the issues that they have with the regulation, with the previously proposed regulation, which was denied. They had asked me to revise some of those sections and it, and basically report back to them every month and work on the regulations until, until it's, meets their standard.
May I ask a question? Is it boilerplate that both methadone and marijuana are put together into one piece? Have other towns done it that way? Is that why we're doing it that way?
I know other towns have done it that way, but it's not, that's by no means necessarily the standard for a moratorium. Okay, I'm not going to say more than that.
Has, I, is my understanding that at least one member of the general assembly has introduced a bill regarding recreational marijuana? Is that going to be contemplated in the regulations as well?
No, it's, as of now, it's not.
Okay.
I think it's certainly an important part of the conversation to see how things unfold in Washington and Hartford over the next six months, to see kind of what direction all that decides to go in. And obviously, it's something that's on my mind as I'm drafting these and revising them, but, I have to tread carefully when proposing parts of a regulation that I think are appropriate, as opposed to what I've been directed to by the zoning commission to include.
So then may, I make a suggestion that we add into this moratorium recreational as well, because if this covers February 20, goes till February 5th, 2018, let's just play the situation out. If the legislature voted on it and say it was successfully passed, signed by the governor, usually that would kick in on October 1st of 2017. So without, that would actually make it available this year. And then we, the boards would have to act really quickly. It'd be my suggestion, just my suggestion, we can bring it up for a vote, that we include, as well as medical marijuana dispensaries or producers, any recreational marijuana dispensary.
I completely agree. I mean, I think if you're going to be taking, if we're going to be taking a look at the medical marijuana regulations, I think we should try to take the most comprehensive view as possible and kind, try to see all the different avenues that, that might pop up. So I think it's, it's certainly a responsible action from the planning commission to do that. To recommend that.
Any comments from members or any motions? We have, we need a motion to refer to the zoning commission.
I'll make a motion to refer it.
Okay, motion to refer by Commissioner Vigliotti. Is there a second? Mr. Vexi? Discussion?
I would just ask that we send a note that we're, well, I'm personally disappointed that it's being done strictly by the zoning commission. I think it should be done by both boards.
I think we might want, yeah, I would agree that we indicate that we at least be, have some means of participating from our perspective in the discussion of that, whether they have a joint session or something like that. Pardon the pun. That was very accidental, I didn't mean to say that.
Joint session.
Are we intending to include the statement on recreational marijuana into this?
I'm sorry, sir?
Are we intending to add the state, a statement?
That is going to be my request to do that, yes. And I should ask the proposer, is that, okay, with you, okay, yes.
And the statement was, one more time?
To add in that the, extend the moratorium to recreational marijuana dispensaries.
I have that. And then the second one was?
To indicate that we wish to have an active role, a combined meeting. Let me try that one, if possible.
Which they did suggest-
Okay.
Uh, holding a joint meeting between both the planning commission and the zoning commission, when, when some momentum, I think, starts to make shape.
I think that would be a good way, we don't want to, because what I, I don't want to happen is, I don't want them to develop a proposal and just send it back here and then we're not even talking to each other. I think it would benefit from a greater discussion between the two boards on that one. And it would probably be best if it was a special meeting instead of, you know, tacking on to the regular business agenda. I know theirs get pretty complex these days. Okay. Any other items? Mr. Vexi?
There's another item that you have here, the proposed text amendment to the town of Stratford zoning regulation, time limits on special case. Do we wish to take that up this evening?
Oh, yeah. Hold on. We have to, yeah, we haven't done that yet.
I've got an extra for you.
Actually, that one is, is that for item 11? Draft resolution for new regulation updates?
We were going to either waive the rules or just discuss and discuss it next month.
I was getting ready to waive the rules, so you take-
This, this one, because, because it was already on our agenda, the status of it, we took it up under that. That other one, I think we'll take up under item 11, so. So, yeah, we, that's a separate issue. So this is just on the marijuana and methadone regulation. Any further comments on the referral of the text amendment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Kerry's unanimous, though. Good. Any sentiment or erosion control?
No.
We have an implementation update on the Greenway project. Stratford Greenway Extension Preliminary Design Report, recommendation is for adoption. Mr. Bansky and Mr. Vexi will give you, gentlemen, the floor for this one.
I will give the floor to Commissioner Vexi to start. And anything that he doesn't touch upon, then I know I would be happy to, to jump in.
Commissioner?
The Greenway committee has reviewed the, the design report in its entirety. The preliminary report was approved by us at our last meeting. What we're looking now is to get an approval at this point so that we can move forward and send it on or through. The Greenway committee is a branch of this organization. Here we need approval from you, and then we can move it on through planning to the council.
Directly to the council?
Sorry, I was taking a note.
The Green, the Greenway project that goes, referred directly to the council?
Okay.
Do you have an actual copy of that? Just see. Okay, wow. Okay, we can do that. Okay, members have questions on?
I have two, one, one request and one question.
Shoot, go ahead.
I actually think they did a pretty good job, although I wish they would put some pictures in here, because our town council doesn't necessarily know everything about this.
I think a map would be good.
Project manager was an engineer.
We could take a slum show with them when we give them this document. On page three, sections five through eight, if you could gray them, indent them, do something so that they, it's obvious we are not building those right now.
Which ones are we not building right now? Which ones are we not building right now?
Five through eight. Can you just mark them for me? That that is outside of the realm of this, of this project.
Remove them?
Don't remove them because they are part of the future project.
Amend them?
But they are, they are not part of this funded project.
Got it.
And I know they could spend all their time discussing that when it's not part of the buildable portion of this. So do anything you can, indent it, make it smaller, do gray it, do something with it.
I wasn't the project manager on this. I don't know if this was being done by the engineering department?
Yeah, well, this was, this was based on the discussions from the community gatherings. They, so that's how they agreed to deal with it.
So the plan might be done, but what we can do is I can actually ask to see if they can give us a digital copy of the plan so that we can edit it in-house and put it up on the website?
They promised that that would happen.
Okay.
We already asked them that question.
Good.
But I just think if this is, if this is the document that's going to town council, I don't want to see if they explode in that sense. I'd rather give them, am I right in that sense? I think it'd be clearer for them if they understood exactly where it is and if they could see a map that shows that and then this as a great future thing, it would make better sense.
The complete report has that.
The what?
The complete report.
Has that?
Has that.
Yeah, it's clear in the complete report and I just think that's.
This is, this is highly condensed.
The executive summary.
Well, this was what we, this was partly my suggestion to help the town council be able to bite into this easier. There's one other thing though that, that concerns me and this was pointed out by, I think, one of the zoning members. Our current, our current zoning says that all sidewalks must be concrete.
Yes.
So we are entering in a situation here where we are building off-road bike paths as part of the, not necessarily as part of this project, but as part of the Greenway. We're going to be putting in five foot, five to eight foot wide pathways. You can't do those in concrete. So we need to, in essence, consider change somewhere down the line or exception for if it's a bike path or a multi-use path and it's greater than three feet, we will allow it to be done in, in blacktop or engineered surface or whatever, stamped surface or whatever, bricked edges or whatever, but it doesn't just have to be concrete. Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to run into real trouble as we try to implement some of these situations.
You have to remember, at the present time, all of this work that we're doing is on street.
But part of this was, an extra $70,000 was because on Birdseye, Birdseye Lane, he had to make those lanes concrete instead of doing them in mercatum.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's what I was concerned about saying, we're not going to give.
As we go out into the future, there is going to be those areas which would be doing much better to lay it out in asphalt because of the size, the width and the containment on the properties, just as we did on the Greenway in the, in the things. And I know that's going to come up, come up on a factor and because they put it in, also you run into a lot of problem with a concrete thing where you have a walkway, bikeway, women pushing baby carriages. One of the, one of the things we did, when we put the Greenway in is, is an example. The requirement was to put a barrier through the center of it. The zoning requirements identify a granite barrier. Now, you're going to put, you got six foot on one side and five feet on the other, all right, and you're going to put this barrier, this barrier down there. The asphalt will drift away from that barrier and what's going to happen is bicyclists going to hit it, baby carriages going to hit it. We decided what the better way to do it was to go ahead and indent through there and paint the section. And it.
And it's, it's all up.
I have examples of the work that was done in Quebec, in which they did the whole area along the dock areas for about five miles in that method, color coded for paths, direction and everything.
One final thing is, concrete is more slippery than, than asphalt with bikes, so it makes better sense. I don't know when, I don't know.
Does it actually say in the?
It doesn't say it, but in the plans, because of the discussions with the design company, they are changing their, their design to accommodate all concrete. So essentially, we could scarf back, I think, I think they said they estimate about $70,000 of that money could be scarfed back to actually implement more of the Greenway.
Maybe, I, I don't know if it's in the, you said it's in the zoning regulations? It might be in the subdivision regulations that deal with.
Well, I, I, I don't know, honestly, Jay. I was told that Stratford only builds concrete sidewalks. We don't allow mercatum or whatever, blacktop sidewalks. That someone made it very clear at one of these community meetings that I was at.
Well, I'll look that, I'll, I'll double check to see what's in the regulations and see what's called for because we shouldn't really only be stipulating that you can build in concrete. If you see, I mean, obviously on the roadway, it's going to be roadway material and paint. But as you start to get off, off-road, I mean, it makes, it makes sense to not limit yourself to just concrete, but also you can add in some additional design features by doing, like you said, pavers or perv, impervious, I'm sorry, pervious paving material that the water, it acts just like asphalt, but the water goes directly through it or some combination of that. So I'll look that up and see.
Yeah, I'm curious.
It doesn't, I don't think it affects this going through. I'm just saying that that's something that, whether it's us or zoning, someone needs to do that in terms of making an exception, making a distinction between sidewalks and multimodal pathways.
Yeah, we better research that, see what it is, because I might not even be, it might be, like I said, it might be the building code or some code garnering road construction as opposed to the zoning code, but let's find out where it is.
Yeah, and this just came to me. It might be for state, state operated and maintained roadways where it's, it's actually the state that's mandating that and not, not us locally, but I'll check.
Well, the, the, the road they talked, spoke, spoke about was Birdseye, Birdseye Road. So that's, that's a local, that's not a state road. That's our local road.
Yep, it is.
They specifically said that has to be concrete and I was like, okay.
I'll do some research.
Just ask a question on a different subject. How exactly does the Greenway work on West Broad Street? That's one of the, with the rotary in there, that's one of the more complicated.
That is, that is one of the most expensive elements of the whole thing. And, and the way it's come down is we're lucky that we're actually building this because our Greenway will connect with Complete Streets there and that will be our, essentially right now, that is our, our only official crossing of Main Street. So people traveling to the north essentially will either do there or at Barnum Avenue and Main Street. So those are, right now are the limits of our two northway crossings. And we've tried to coordinate the designers of both the Greenway and our Greenway so that when they meet at the traffic circle along with DOT, that's going to be a lot of work to get them all to agree, but I think they're coming close about coming up with the safest route to make it all happen. Basically, our Greenway goes to the south end of the circle and the Complete Streets Greenway is coming to the north edge of the circle and DOT is redesigning that whole intersection there where you come on and off 95 and they're going to end up coming up with how the two connect.
And I met with all, I met with the state.
Oh, so you've, you've done it now?
I met with DOT, I met with the consultant for our Complete Streets Plan and I met with the town engineer who's been working on the, the green, with the Greenway committee. And the state is well aware of all the intentions that, that we're looking to achieve and they have, they have a project that they're undertaking next year, which will go for, or I'm sorry, this year, which is, I believe, from California to the underpass. And they, they've seen the Complete Streets Plan, they've seen the Greenway Plan and they're going to be taking on a good majority of the work that we want to do, they will be doing it. So hopefully we'll get them to, to foot the bill on, on the West Broad interchange area.
In the summertime, they, when I spoke with them about it, they seemed really not at all resistant. They were really embracing of that idea. So I think they will.
Okay, there's no other questions. We'll take a motion to adopt the plan. I've been advised by Mr. Bansky there should be two motions. One is to adopt the plan formally by the planning commission and the second one be to refer to the town council with a favorable recommendation. So, Mr. Vexi?
I'll make those recommendations.
Appropriately dressed in green, I might add too. Okay. Motion to adopt the plan by Mr. Vexi, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Watson, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carrie's unanimously, the plan's adopted. Now we'll take a motion to Mr. Vexi to refer it to the town council with a favorable recommendation.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, further comments? Ms. Padeski?
One question, will that take out segment five, six, seven, eight?
No, I, I just said.
It will.
Highlight it or, or dull it out, don't take.
Let's make sure we get the, the text right. That's not part of the funding request, is that correct?
It, it was removed for other reasons than just funding.
Okay.
So we didn't want to get rid of it because eventually it is going to get done, but it was going right into the middle of a political debate. So we just said, let's gray this out and not, and not do that at the moment.
I see, okay.
So that's why I'm saying, just indent it, make it one point smaller, gray it or do something because.
Bold at the final recommendation.
Or maybe just bold that this area is being.
Because we'll, you'll have a referral letter and I just want to make sure I have the right text in there. Send it, make sure we get it right.
That's how the design people are approaching it.
If I'm, if I'm having trouble with the wording or we're having trouble with the wording, I may have to reach out just to double check, make sure it's articulating what you want.
I, I, honestly, I don't care. I just think that it's easiest when it goes to the council.
Sure.
Make it easy.
So we don't raise any questions.
I agree completely. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carrie's unanimously. Okay, any update on Complete Streets?
I was expecting the final draft of the plan two weeks ago. They were unable to get it to me. They had some, some things that they had to change that came up with our meeting with the state. I was expecting the draft today, so it may have been emailed to me at some point or may, may come later tonight. Once we get that, it'll go up on the town website for a 30-day comment, open commentary period. And we are currently looking to allocate, reprogram some money from the grant that we actually came under on. There is approximately $36,000 left over from the grant and we're going to try to push the priority project further by doing some further traffic modeling as well as a survey for the entire area. That'll get us to the one step closer towards construction design plans, which is a big step. We're still waiting, I'm still waiting to hear back from OPM to see whether or not they're going to grant the reprogramming of that, that additional money that we have left over. So it's good news.
Very good. Okay, moving on, coastal resiliency plan that was sent, been emailed link, link out to members. It's a large, as Commissioner Vexi and I were speaking earlier today, 254-page document.
Read it a few times.
Yeah, I'm sure we all did. I'm not quite done with it, I might add.
It's on the computer.
Yeah. We don't necessarily have to do that right now, but let's at least open up the discussion and why don't you bring us up to date where we are?
Sure. Well, the plan is, the plan is done. It's complete. This was run by the engineering department. Commissioner Watson did a very well thought-out review of that final plan, had some great questions, which I'm actually waiting to hear back from the consultant about some things that I, I did not know the answer to. And I think there might have been a few spelling errors that they're going to, we're going to digitally fix so that when, when it goes up onto the website, all that looks nice. Basically, the adoption of this plan will open up the town of Stratford to a lot of state and federal funding that we've been missing out on currently because we do not have a plan in place. I think one of the most useful parts of the plan for anyone that is kind of struggling with some of the topics in here because it can get a little dry at times, is the, are the, the action plan. And that really sets out, lays out the next steps the town needs to take in order to better protect itself, in order to reduce flood insurance for property owners who are already struggling with flood insurance costs that are not going down, setting up organizational bodies that will basically be at the wheel for the town regarding resiliency and, and fortification or retreat for that matter. So if you're struggling to get through the document, that's where I think a lot of the juicy details really are as to what, okay, now what next? You know, it's a lengthy plan. I think it's, it's a really good first step for the town, giving our vulnerability that we have now. And we haven't even really seen a big storm yet. You know, we, I think we've been lucky of late, so I think it's a great step in the right direction and it also is going to open us up to maybe getting some, some meaningful assistance on doing some of these projects.
And I think it's really critical because we are the third most endangered town in Connecticut in terms of landmass because of coastal flooding. So we, we're doing the right thing, I think, with this plan. I know that it's still shocking when you look, look at it, the potential for how it will change Stratford, but I think it's, it's a good plan. It's a lot to read when you go through it and it's hard to think, a lot of people will look at it and only look at their neighborhood, which I think is a tough thing. I, I hope that before this is released to the public that we maybe can create an executive summary, something like this that, that gives some of the rationale, some of the uber parts of how Stratford is being affected by this, specifically Stratford, that we talk about our landmass, how many acres that we're, we have in comparison to other communities in, in Connecticut and the kind of funding that we are, we can get if we are forward thinking. A, a, a statement like that, I think would go a long way towards talking about, we're not putting our head in the sand, we're not writing off any community. And the one thing that I must say that I really think they did a fabulous job on is the concerns about communities being essentially Xed out. I think they addressed that so beautifully in this report because if you read this report, they don't, they don't X out any community. They made, there are subtle changes now that the ring around Stratford is, it's not 100% but it's much better than when we discussed it with them in all of the meetings. So they, they took our feelings about, we wanted to keep Stratford whole and I think they implemented as much as they could physically. Granted that Mother Nature is still going to be Mother Nature, but I think that I saw real changes, real efforts where they tried to connect unconnected dike areas or gates or alternative ways of stopping water flow to cover great parts of, of Stratford. So I think it's a very good start.
Do you wish to move adoption? Do you wish to move adoption of the plan?
I move that we, are we adopting this? Are we sending this on to zoning? Are we? I move that we adopt.
Same thing? Okay, it's going to be a two-part, two votes.
Okay. I move that we adopt the coastal resiliency, it's, it's no longer a draft, the coastal resiliency plan for Stratford.
Okay, second by Mr. Vexi. Any discussion? I think just great job to everyone involved with it. I know they did a lot of work with that. I remember the presentations, glad you had the public comments and it's, it's another ironic comment, it's a, is a dry subject, but even though it's.
I was actually talking about this, this is like the comedy hour here.
This is. I'll be here every month, you know?
I was, I was talking to another planner who basically reviews plans, resiliency plans, and we were talking about how, and it was something he mentioned to me and never even really thought about it, how, and it kind of touches on what Commissioner Watson was saying, this is a real unifying document. It, this talks about protecting Stratford, doesn't talk about, we need to protect Lordship or we need to protect this neighborhood. And in that sense, it's something that I think the town really can get behind and it's also, it's a visual symbol to others, much, much smaller. it's also, it's a visual symbol to other much, much smaller neighborhood-scale projects that aren't even included in this. So I think it's a really unique opportunity for the town of Stratford.
Okay. All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Mr. Watson, wanna make a motion to refer to the Town Council?
I move that we refer this to the Town Council for their vote.
With a favorable recommendation? Mr. Vexi?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
May I ask a question about this?
Yes.
How does this get, get, go, go into our planning? How does this go into our zoning? How does this go into our conservation? How does, how do we start putting all of this information to reflect in our elevations, zonings?
Chapter six, action, the action plan, you know? And it, it lays it out, you know, first, it's setting up the organizational body that'll be the steering committee for the entire action plan. It'll be revising the zoning regulations so that, whatever happens, for example, anyone within two-hundred feet of this beach, your home, if your home gets knocked down, you rebuild, you have, you cannot just build the way it was, you have to go up.
And my...
That's just an example. It's not that that's what you have to do.
Well, my follow-up is, could this be part of the job description of a planner?
Oh, absolutely.
Because it makes it very clear that you need a full-time person who takes the responsibility as your resiliency person.
Absolutely. I mean, there are towns that have a resiliency coordinator only. They're, they're not the town planner, they don't do anything with town planning. All they do is they focus on coastal resiliency and projects for the town, as well as looking for money. So, that would be, you know, hopefully, I'm sitting in the room interviewing someone that, that day, if we, if we decide to do that, that would be key for me, to have some understanding of coastal communities.
Yeah, if that position's filled, I don't think they're gonna have any short, they're gonna have any downtime. There's gonna be plenty for, of work for them to do. They're not gonna be playing solitaire at their desk, especially with that.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. One more item, draft resolution for new regulation updates. This was also provided, I believe, 'cause I don't have it.
You can put one right on top right here.
No, thank you. Time limit, okay. Why don't you explain, explain this?
So, there are two, approximately two, two major changes in this, in section twenty-point-three. The first talks about when there's, within six months of the date of approval of a special case, the zoning commission can stipulate that final plans must be filed within six months of that approval, if the zoning commission wants to do that. There was discussion as to, well, it's kind of an unnecessary, well, there's a lot of facets to this. It's an unnecessary level of, or layer of approval that's already really being done by myself, as well as the zoning enforcement officer, anytime an application comes in. Number two, this is an official, in recent court, in recent litigation, it's been determined that although the town of Stratford has never treated this as a formal site plan review, by law, this is a site plan review, and, one, they were not being advertised as we are gonna be doing a site plan review in two weeks for final plans. They were not ever, they were not noticing of an approval or denial of final plans. There were some recent appeals regarding this. The judge shook his finger at the town of Stratford, saying, you guys need to, you guys need to either address this, or you need to, you either need to remove final plan review, which most towns in the state of Connecticut do. I think there's three, and we're one of the three that does final plan reviews. Or you need to start advertising for it. And to do that, we would be passing either the costs on to the town, or passing the costs on to the applicant, which is, you know, five hundred, six hundred dollars per advertisement. Additionally, when you're doing this site plan review for a final, for final plans, is what they call it, that's also now an appealable, an appealable decision. So something that was, let's say, I went and got a hundred units approved for, at some place. They said, okay, Jay, you're approved, come back in six months. There's a fifteen-day appeal window during my first approval, and then when I come back, there's a second window of an appeal. So, it's, it's redundant, it's making the applicant more vulnerable to appeals, it's adding more work to the agenda for the zoning commission when we're already doing the work anyways. So that's final plan review. They're considering getting rid of final plan review. Next are the time limits. Currently, there are, when a special case gets approved, it's usually granted for eighteen months. Any project that hasn't been started with eighteen, within eighteen months, needs to come back to the zoning commission and request another eighteen-month approval. If anyone has served on the zoning commission before, we get a lot of these. There are a lot of extension requests. So the, the commission asked me to look at the regulations, see if there was a way to revise it. I told them that, you know, some towns, I don't know how many, but I know that there are some, and I talked to the town attorney, that will have their planning staff do, will grant the extensions up to a certain period of time. After talking with the zoning commission, we determined that four administrative extensions granted by the Planning and Zoning Administrator could be granted with a cumulative total of six years. Any extension grant requested after six years has to go back to the zoning commission for another extension request. I've never seen an extension ever denied. I actually talked with several town attorneys here. They have never heard of an extension denied. So, it kinda seemed like a mere formality that was taking up some time with the, with my staff, my staff time in preparation for these, as well as for the zoning commission. So they asked that I rewrite it, and that's what I did. So I'm allowed to grant four eighteen-month extensions total. If someone comes back for a fifth, they have to go to the zoning commission.
When I was on the zoning commission, we had a, we had one that came through, and it was a very, very long span between when they were initially approved and when they were going for an extension. And we actually requested to rehear it, because no member who was sitting on the commission at that point was there for the initial hearing, just because generally, you're, you're at four years max. So you might get a few of those if you go out to six years, where, just because of the turnover that you have on these boards, if you don't have members that come back. Interesting. Questions from members? They're really comfortable with six years, huh?
You know, the terms are something that weren't really discussed. You know, maybe that, that might have been something that had slipped the mind, or something that we just weren't really considering, the term limits. I think one of the things we talked about was, okay, a lot can change in five years. And they figured, okay, five years, let's give them five, let's give them five years, and then the, the trampoline underneath them, that one additional year, or the safety net, not trampoline, the safety net for that additional year. I think what's nice is that the regulation also gives me the right to refer at any point anything to the zoning commission for a hearing. They could be coming back for their very first request, and in between that time, you know, we got, we, the town received fifty million dollars to do something across the street, and now we have a different vision for what's gonna be happening over there. I have the right to be able to send it back at any point to the zoning commission for a full administrative review, and then they can either say yes or no.
Do you report to them which ones you've extended, so that there's a public record of that?
I do, yes. Yep. They've asked that anytime an extension is granted, that I just report that to them.
Okay. And they have the power, do they have the power to petition it back, or once you give the, you don't tell them in advance? So once you've given the approval, then it's good for eighteen months, and then...
Correct.
Somebody would have to be, know something was coming up in order to say, okay, we're gonna wanna look at this ahead of time, don't approve it.
We would put a note in the file, on the front page of the file, so that, you know, if I get run over by a bus and someone replaces me, they open...
Promote it to Secretary of the Interior, you know, something like that.
That's right. They open the file, and there's a note that says, "Request for an extension should be referred back to the zoning commission," which is, we do that all the time when we have a concern about a project and they're coming back for something. I can certainly put in here as a recommendation that we reduce it to, was it four years?
I was gonna say four.
So, the months are generally eighteen-month extensions, so just let me do the math, I'm terrible at math.
Thirty-six would be, so...
Thirty-six.
Three years?
Yeah. Thirty-six, so, I mean, you can certainly reduce it to three years.
Two plus a, two, eighteen, eighteen, and twelve? Year and a half? Year and a half, and then one year would get you up to four years, right?
I did three, three years of summer school for math, so you're looking at the wrong person. I'm sorry. So we have twelve times four, forty-eight. Four year, four extensions would be four years.
No, what I'm saying is, if you grant an extension of eighteen months, well, they have eighteen months to begin with, right?
Yep.
Eighteen months to begin. One extension, eighteen, gives, brings you up to three years.
Right.
If we allowed an additional one-year extension, that would bring you up to four years.
Correct.
So then, at least within that period, there'll be somebody left. The odds are, somebody will be still there that remembers it.
So, the, so the Planning and Zoning Administrator would be able to grant three eighteen-month extensions and one twelve-month, is that, is that right? Or was it just three eighteen-month?
Think about this, it would be, it's the initial, it would...
Yeah, so if there were, if it was three eighteen-month extensions, it would be approximately four and a half years.
Okay.
Otherwise, we would have to reduce it down to two in order to stay within that four-year window.
Okay. I could go with that. I, I just think six is an awfully long time. And you could go through several zoning commissioners over there, and, you know, you'd be extending it with, you know, really, it, it's best if somebody is gonna be doing something that they go ahead and do it. I mean, I understand the complexities of that, but I mean, I remember coming up, somebody brought up the other day in one, something, the, the plans, that they wanna build condominiums down by Riverview Bistro. And I'm not sure if that one's even still active, but there's nobody left that was sitting on that board with me. I was actually, I think, an alternate at that point, that was so long ago. But these things should be resolved as quickly as they can. I don't know what other members feel, but I'm just saying, mine, I thought six years was a bit excessive.
That's exactly what I thought of when this came.
Mm-hmm.
Because when I was looking for a house in Stratford, the real estate agent was saying, oh, if you were coming next year, we'd have these new condos built here.
Yep.
So three-year, two extensions would give it three years total before it has, it's mandated to go back to the zoning commission. And then, three extensions, three eighteen-month extensions is a four-and-a-half-year period total.
Is the eighteen-month a legal requirement?
I believe, I believe that's a statutory requirement of an eighteen, eighteen-month approval.
Okay.
That's how long a, a special case is good for.
So they have the original approval for eighteen months. Then they request the extension, so that's the first extension is eighteen months. And then the second extension is twelve.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah.
And that would bring you up to four and a half.
Yeah, four and a half.
So trying to keep it to four years, you'd have to have the second extension be shorter.
And, and you know, I'm not, I mean, that's not a make or break for me. If it goes to four and a half, I'm still good with that, but then at least that's cutting you down. It's not quite as long.
We also might have some word, because there's, if we're only talking about six months, some people, if some development's coming back up again, someone's talking about it, so it won't be totally out of the wild.
Okay, I'm gonna actually make a mo, I've done this a couple of times today. I'm gonna make a motion to refer this to the zoning commission with a favorable recommendation, and our recommendation that the, let me make sure I have it in front of me. Hang on. I was looking at it. Now I got lost. Can you take it?
No, I have mine, I gave you...
Oh, here we go. It's in front of me. It's on the second page.
That's the existing, the proposed.
Let me see what their text says. They grant an extension of eighteen months not to exceed, replace six years to four and a half years.
Okay.
And then in both places, there's two places where it says six years.
Can you say that one more time?
It says, I say, my recommendation is that in both places where it says six years...
Oh, okay.
Replace it to four-point-five years. And again, that's for an administrative review at that point, so it could be as simple as a meeting, going over the issues, make sure they're aware of what's going on, so that this board is, is, the new board as it's constituted at that point, would be aware of, of the project, and, you know, they can make any adjustments, or if everything's good, they're good to go. Is there a second for the motion? Mr. Vexi? Any further comments, corrections, changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Any other members' comments, concerns on any other planning issues? We had a good meeting today, went through an awful lot of material. If not, then our next meeting is February twenty-first. If you're not gonna be here, let Mr. Bansky know, so we can line up an alternate, and we'll keep an eye, hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us as well. That always gets dicey.
Yeah. I also will not be here on the...
You will not be here on the twenty-first? Okay. We will need an alternate. I will be here, yeah.
No, but if they want to try...
I'll be here. Anybody else besides Pat not gonna be here? Just, okay. Okay, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vigliotti, second, Mr. Vexi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We are adjourned at eight-twenty-eight PM. Thanks, everybody.